Good evening, everyone. Welcome to a meeting of the Hundred and Central Regional High School Board of Education. Please be advised that this and all meetings of the Board are open to the public and media consistent with the Open Public Meetings Act and JSA 10-4-6, and that advance notice required therein has been provided. Meeting notice was also posted in the boardroom of the upper school campus, sent to The Courier News, Star Ledger, Express Times, and the Hundred and County Democrat, and sent to the Clerks of Delaware Township, East Danwell Township, Flemington Borough, Raritan Township, and Reddington Township. The public will have an opportunity to be heard as shown on the agenda. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield? Here. Dr. Charney?
Here.
Mr. Davidson?
Here.
Mr. Fowler?
Here.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Here.
Mr. Nichol?
Here.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Mr. Richard?
Here.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Here. Could we please stand for the flag salute?
The flag is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome, everyone. So we have some correspondence that the Board received that's on the agenda, and then we're going to move right into Dr. Moore's superintendent report.
Thank you, thank you. Just a few items tonight. I want to turn it over as quickly as we can to Mr. McIsaac and Mr. Twizzler for tonight's departmental presentation, but a couple of things that I want to share, some information about. First off, every three years, schools have to undergo a thorough review of compliance to state law, and that review is known as CUSAC, which stands for the Equality Single Accountability Continuum. I think I have that right. We must gather hundreds of documents to show that we've submitted state reports on time. Frustratingly, when the state already has a record of our submissions, we have to show copies of policies that are already available on our website, and we have to show minutes and agendas from our meetings that are also all available on our website. So it takes hours and hours of work to compile these documents, and in any year, it's an undertaking. Last year, the state waived the process, so in recognition of all that schools were dealing with as they dealt with COVID. This year, as we've noted, we've struggled as well with the impacts of Omicron and contact tracing and all that we've been through. So we're upset that an effort earlier this year to waive again for us didn't pan out in the Assembly and in the Senate. So we're up for review this year, and we're cooperating in that room, but I do need to tell you that I'm not asking folks here to take more time than is absolutely minimally necessary away from supporting our staff and students as we continue to move out of the pandemic and optimistically so. So this has been a difficult and chaotic year, and I've worked very hard to keep that process from making it more so. So we'll lose points here and there for various things that we've had to do over the past couple of years in terms of focusing on what was on the ground in front of us instead of maybe getting this or that report in on time, and I'm not worried about the outcome of the review. I'm more worried about the time that it will take for us to amass all the documents. So I just want to let you know that that's coming, and we'll have more conversation about it as we schedule those things with the state. I do want to make a case in point for how odd it feels this year. A large portion of the points conferred through this review are based on student performance on state tests, and those state tests have not been given in two years. So it's a monumental undertaking that already feels inauthentic to us. So I'm going to continue with a little bit of frustration. We had two very frustrating experiences in testing that I need to talk about tonight. First, we had a show-stopping number of technical difficulties in our New Jersey GPA testing for juniors that began today. We've been working with the Department of Ed, with Pearson, who is the test vendor, with Google, and to try and resolve those today and in the coming days. We're not the only school that had issues today, but our size presented a scale to those issues that made it very difficult, since some of the solution to some of the issues we were having requires that we touch each individual student Chromebook. So we are looking at resolving those in the coming days. We're going to pause. We announced a pause on testing for tomorrow, and we'll continue to diagnose and fix in the coming days. We do have a plan in front of the state to pick up testing where we left off, but we need their approval, and we'll get an announcement out to everybody as soon as we pick up that schedule again. Some of the options, for example, may be to restart the testing later this week and move it into next week, or just move it out right into next week and start on Monday. So we have a couple of different options in the days ahead. I'm also frustrated, and I understand all of the frustration that parents and students feel about a situation with the SAT and our inability to offer a makeup for Saturday's canceled test. The makeup would have been scheduled for the 26th of this month. It's actually, I think it's actually incorrect to say I'm frustrated at this point. I think I spent most of the weekend frustrated. I'm just kind of sad about it at this point and heartbroken about it as we continue to work on it. Now, despite rumors to the contrary, I've kept you all in the loop, but I want to make sure we update everything here tonight. Despite rumors to the contrary, College Board is not allowing us to run the makeup on the 26th. They're also not allowing our students to test in another location on the 26th. As soon as they refund, they say, and I don't know the full technical sort of reasoning behind this, but as soon as they refund, they are not able to reinstate test takers. You know, I've heard that they have been able to do that in other districts at different times, but I can't get them to comment on that. I'm confused, really, because of the more hopeful picture they'd drawn when we first spoke to them last Thursday, but also because they seem to continue to tell some of our parents through their call center that we do have the option to run the exam on the 26th. I would want to do nothing more than, nothing less than that. It's just that they aren't currently allowing us to do that. So I think part of it is that they are a big company. They have customer service call centers that work with our parents and our kids. We're dealing with technical support folks in a registration center. We're also today and through the weekend, we were dealing with corporate contacts that we have there who we were hopeful would be able to put this together for us, but you know, they're having trouble even kind of explaining some of it to us today. So we're still pushing at it. We're going to continue to press. There's no giving up here. They have said that we may be able to host an administration of the test during a school day later on in April, but that's not as quickly as we'd like to have it, and it's not March 26th, which would be ideal for us. We're digging into that option that I just mentioned, but we're also going to continue to advocate to host a makeup on the 26th, at least, at the very least, to have our students be able to participate in the test in another school on the 26th, if there's room in other schools. And I do certainly want to apologize about this. Had we made certainly a different decision last Thursday, we would not have gone through all of the angst that we've been going through over the past few days, and we've avoided much of that. I convey that apology with the understanding that, you know, the ramifications here are surprising to us, but I want to convey that apology not just to our teachers and our staff and our students and their parents and everybody else who was on tap to be there on Saturday and help pull this test off without any hitches, but also all the staff who've been working on this over the past few days and through the weekend to try and get us to a resolution. No matter where we land, I promise we'll do a full debrief with our own folks here, with College Board, and with all the other partners who handle registration and other tasks of this test as we look to see how we can avoid anything like this happening in the future. But I'll keep you all updated as we continue to work on that with College Board and other partners. Yes, sir.
So I am confused by this because surely districts, many districts had prepared to postpone this test, and why are we not granted the, I think it's the right, to retest on the 26th where other districts are? Do you have any insights on it? Does the county, does the county provide us any leverage in this? I know the College Board can be difficult, but if we could go through another avenue, maybe we could meet some progress. It seems egregiously unfair to our students who have prepared for this in many ways to not be granted what I consider really the right to take the test as scheduled or to meet an arranged makeup date that has been, that is available to other districts. If you could just lend some clarity to this.
Yeah, and I agree that it's incredibly frustrating that our students don't have the opportunity when we've, we can't figure out the logistics behind why that's impossible. What I can share is when we were having conversations with them last week about cancellation, and we were told that, you know, things would be okay if we weren't ready to commit to hosting on the 26th just yet, as we had to iron out, well, which of our staff are available, which of our custodial, what does our facilities use look like? You know, we had just some things to wrap up to make sure that we could commit to that. When we weren't ready to commit to that in the moment, we were told, that's okay. Your kids will be able to test somewhere else if you're not able to host it indeed at your space. Don't worry, just let us know what you're going to do for Saturday. But it became apparent immediately after we hung up the phone with them that that wasn't the case, that indeed our saying that we weren't ready to commit just yet on the 26th. We probably would have been ready on Friday to commit to that, but the fact that we weren't ready to commit on Thursday meant that they were moving ahead on a process that was going to boot our students out of registration altogether. I don't understand that, and that's what we're trying to figure out with them. So I can't give full clarity to your question except to share and commiserate in some of the confusion about it. Can we turn to some better things? All right. Tonight, Mr. Brendan McIsaac, Mr. Dan Twizzler, we're here with Mrs. Jessica Cangelosy-Hates, who's probably going to just let them speak, right? You know, Jessica never, never. To discuss fine and performing arts here at Central, and not only do they have an informative report, they have another surprise for you as well. So I'll hand it off to you all. And Board members, you have a copy of this PDF in your email, if that's easier for you to track there.
All right, well, good evening, everyone. It's good to see you again, those of you who I saw back in the fall when I presented for the English department. I'm here once again. Mr. Twizzler and I sort of share several of the arts. I focus on film and drama.
And I focus on music and art. And don't worry, I will also be coming back at a later time because I have some other departments as well to represent.
So one of the things that we want to bring to your attention, you may already be aware that the visual and performing arts are undergoing a standards revision process, and I would compare this a little bit akin to what we saw happening in English and math a number of years ago, when those standards were sort of reconceived through the Common Core process, and we've seen other disciplines also go through standards revision processes. And usually what comes out of that is they take what in many cases are very disparate or sort of very numerous standards that go in a lot of different directions, and they try to begin to house them under a framework that gives a little more coherence, principle, and focus to the arts. And in this particular case, as they were revising these standards, they really began to look at processes and principles that regardless of the particular art that you might be engaging in, it's providing a framework for that creative process with the undergirding sort of ambition to make the arts a lifelong pursuit, a lifelong endeavor, and certainly with some of the things we have to share with you tonight, you can kind of see how that is very evident. Mr. Twizzler, I don't know if there's anything you want to?
Yeah, I just want to add in one aspect, and that is, if you were to go and look at the standards for drama, or art, or music, they might look very different. But what's really interesting about how the state put this together is it's the same four characteristics that undergird, I believe was Mr. McIsaac's word, that shape what all this is about. And what they did was they really just provided different language depending on the setting as to where a student was at. So, for example, if you were in exploring music, it might make more sense to use the music media or mixed media standards instead of using the music standards, because a lot of the music standards are geared towards ensembles and performance, and that just doesn't make as much sense in a course where there's not a performance. So first, I'd like to talk to you about art. This slide really showcases a lot of what our students are doing. All the visual and performing arts are more about the action that the students are being able to accomplish in class than necessarily a test that might be at the end. I really like in some of these pictures that you can see the design process, that students are really trying to champion more in these classes, where they're spending more time upfront thinking about what they're going to create and planning it out and designing it on paper before they actually put ink on the brush to be able to actually create anything. They're also doing a lot on the backend. We're spending more time creating things like portfolios, where students are reflecting on what they're creating and thinking about how it connects to the whole world. With that in mind, we do have some classes that are doing projects that are connecting to that outside world. On the left, you see the Memory Project. This is a program where Vince D'Amico teamed up with a program that connects to orphanages in Africa and collects pictures of those students, and then our students draw them, and then send all of those pieces of art back to the students. So these underprivileged students that are in remote villages in Africa are now getting portraits of themselves. On the right, you see our Wings of Hope Project that's being done by the Team Arts Class. In that class, each of those small different colored pictures are feathers. Each one is inspirational, and then they put it up on the wall, Lindsay Hopkins put it up on the wall to be able to have it be a selfie situation, so the students could then stand in front of that and have these wings of hope behind them to be able to add to social media. We also went a little bit closer to home. We have pictures up all across the campus, and it's quite awesome for our students to be able to showcase their work. We've went through multiple years where students really had a restriction of being able to create and display their work, and so it's fantastic to be able to walk the halls of campus and see student artwork up. We also had the opportunity to work with the Hundred and County Library and be able to showcase some of our student work there. Music is also excited about some changes. I'm a little bit short on time. I can't go through every awesome course that we have at the program of studies. There's quite a few of them, but I just wanted to showcase two of them that have had great changes this year. For the first time, I just mentioned Team Art. For the first time, we're offering Team Music, and we've had a lot of success so far with our students that are in the autism program to be able to participate music and work with some of our general education students like we're doing in art. And so far, it's only started this semester, but it has been a fantastic start to the course. Kids are really happy about it. The staff is very happy about it. They're doing a great job. The Marching Red Devils have taken back to the field, and it's great to be able to have those experiences again where our students can showcase their skill out to the world. I wanted to take a moment. I'm sure you're all aware of how fantastic our music program is and how wonderful their performances are, and if you're not, stick around. But I wanted to show you this picture because I was truly moved. This was an example of all of our choir students coming together in one ensemble with the orchestra in the pit supporting them. So in this one piece, they really showcased the breadth of skill across the department, all working together. If you haven't had a chance to come out to see one of the concerts, here's a list of all of our events that are coming up in the spring, and I invite you to come out and join us.
All right, shifting to drama and film, I want to highlight our two Staff All-Stars, Miss Enterline and Mr. Rupp, and I kind of want to draw some attention to their unique qualifications. Mr. Rupp remains actively involved in film projects, fight choreography, video production, and he plays a very frightening antagonist in these clips. And as far as Miss Enterline goes, once you've been bobbleheaded by your students, you have achieved the pinnacle of instructional success. So kudos to both of them. In terms of the drama program, it really is a tiered leveled program that allows students to walk in with the minimal, if they have even just the slightest interest and inquiry in that entry level of exploring theater, all the way up through honors theater, and each course really just sort of intensifies both the production, the performance, the demands on the part of the students in terms of scene performance, character study, director responsibilities. Miss Enterline really runs a constant production, and it is very common to just, her classes are happening either in the little theater or in the auditorium as much as possible because it really is a workshop experience that she seeks to establish in there. Many different projects, students dabbling in design, makeup application. You see our theater old age makeup project, and in the lower left-hand corner is our Artist in Residence Program that we've been engaged in for a number of years with the George Street Playhouse, where professionals come out to interact with the students, to talk about stagecraft, acting technique, song, dance. Each year, it has a little bit of a different focus, and that's something we've been able to sustain for a number of years and has been a great success. The way that students engage in these classes obviously then parlay's into other places, both the activities in terms of performances that we have here and our Thespian Society, who annually competes and is awarded, you know, a phenomenal array of commendations and success, and we actually have two students with us tonight who are members of that society and can certainly answer questions about that work and the things they've done and how their classwork has extended or offered them the opportunity to really indulge their interest and their passion. In terms of film, we have two courses, Intro to Film and Honors Film Studies, and this is a program that has really exploded over the past few years, and again, I ascribe that to a fair amount, to just the energy and enthusiasm of Mr. Rupp and his passion for film. Going back to the standards that we were talking about, one of the things that is evolving as regards a number of the arts is really more of that creative impetus that is involved in a course where the focus historically might have been more on learning the language of film, learning to critique film, learning about different styles and genres. We are now moving more into the direction, not necessarily of production per se, but given the ubiquity of student cell phones, with the purchase of just a few pieces of technical equipment from stands to gimbals to things that can do like floating shots just using your cellphone, students can really learn to appreciate and study screenshots as they learn everything from lighting to staging to composition and begin to emulate those techniques using their phones. And I won't put anyone to the trivia test, but you're welcome to see how many of these you recognize. But I put them up here really just to illustrate that when students study, whether it's classic or contemporary films, and they're looking at stills from those films, those are the opportunities that they have to look at, like the middle one in the upper left from Citizen Kane, I gave it away in case anybody was wondering. Orson Welles was famous for his deep focus shots and having characters foreground, mid-ground, background. So students learn those principles, whether it's learning the difference between close-ups or pulling back, or really composing shots, or learning about costuming, and with each film, with each technique, they learn how it's applied in a film, how that job is done, and they begin to explore how they might replicate some of those things on their own as well. As was stated, we have a treat for you tonight, two of our students, Emmy Herman and Toby Trineski, who recently performed in Les Mis, if you had an opportunity to see them. But again, we wanted to bring this in to kind of show you that the students who engage in the arts here really do live and breathe that passion. The arts for them are, in many cases, the things that bring some of these students to school, that bring all of their other interests with them, and, you know, going into these classes, seeing the teachers doing their work, you get that passion, you get that connection that kids have to and through the arts. So without any further ado, I want to introduce our student performers.
Hi, I'm Emmy Herman. I played Eponine, and I'm going to be singing on my own. On my own, pretending he's beside me. All alone, I walk with him till morning. Without him, I feel his arms around me. And when I lose my way, I close my eyes and he has found me. In the rain, the pavement shines like silver. All the lights are misty in the river. In the darkness, the trees are full of starlight. And all I see is him and me forever and forever. And I know it's only in my mind that I'm talking to myself and not to him. And although I know that he is blind, still I say, there's a way for us. I love him, but when the night is over, he is gone. The river's just a river. Without him, the world around me changes. The trees are barren everywhere, the streets are full of strangers. I love him, but every day I'm learning. All my life, I've only been pretending. Without me, his world will go on turning. A world that's full of happiness that I have never known. I love him. I love him. I love him, but only on my own. Thank you.
My name is Toby Trineski, and I do want to mention the presentation that was previously given. I'm actually the vice president of the Thespian Society and also the treasurer of the Triumph Musical, Music Honor Society, and I truly love this program so much in both the theater department and the music department. It's not only just a part of so many students' education, but it's such a community, and everyone there is so close and so loving, including the theater classes, too. I've gone through that process, so really, my heart goes out to the entire program there. And then in Les Mis, I was fortunate enough to get to play the role of Jean Valjean, and the song I'll be performing today is Bring Him Home. And to give a quick little intro on that, it's basically the part in the show where after Valjean finds out that there is a boy who is in love with his daughter, and he originally goes out to fight at the barricade to kind of go against the boy who has been flirting with his daughter, and he sees how much Marius is in love with Cosette, and then this song that I'll be singing kind of talks about those feelings.
God on high, hear my prayer. In my need, you have always been there. He's young, he's afraid. Let him rest, let him rest. Bring him home, bring him home. He's like the sign I might have known. If God had granted me-
He's like the sun I might have known. If God had granted me a sun, the summers died one by one. How soon they fly on and on. And I thought it will be gone. Bring him tears, bring him joy. He is young, he is only a boy. You can take, you can give. Let him leave, let him leave. If I die, let me die. Let him leave. Bring him home, bring Thank you.
Wow, right there.
Yeah, if I could just say a few words. I was fortunate enough to attend opening night. I went to NYU undergrad, spent a lot of time on Broadway, off-Broadway. And if I closed my eyes, I could have been there, literally. Thank you for bringing so much pride to the Central community. You guys are amazing.
I generally don't want to follow something like that, but if there are any questions, we'll take them. If not, I just want to celebrate the kids. Thank you.
Goodness, I just, I want to, so Emmy and Toby were a little worried because they were a week and a half rusty. All right, I just want to say that they were, but again, to echo Mrs. Hughes, thank you for what you and your peers and, and all of the staff and Mr. Klein back there did an awful lot for the show as well, and, and all the teachers and volunteers. I mean, you, it was really difficult to wait for that show, but it was certainly worth waiting for. And I want to thank you too for what you did here tonight. I think you've christened this stage, which that will, that will always be true. That's going to be true forever now. And so just thank you for bringing that to us. There was a dry eye in the house on every night of that show, triumphant return to the stage, and it was just stunning. And it ended a really important week for Central for a lot of reasons. So I really appreciate you coming back and bringing some of that spirit back into, into our meeting tonight again. So bravo, brava, and, and gosh, we'll be seeing you and reading about you someday, I'm sure, both of you. Fantastic.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, I'll round out my report here. Just goodness. It's time to go home now. So round out my report. You have just some action items for, from me tonight. There are some HIBs that were presented in closed session last time that need your vote tonight. And then there's also a catch-up calendar adjustment to make in organizational items, which we just want to get that done now. That just recognizes the emergency day that we took during our last storm. And just a reminder again, we don't have any emergency days left this year, so we'd be deduct, deducting days from spring break if we have anything that's a problem, and that's non-COVID related. If it's COVID-related, we're allowed to take a virtual day. If it's non-COVID related, we're stuck using emergency or, or holiday closure days. That may change for next year, but that's, those are the rules we got this year. So with that, my report is done, and thank you to Mr. McIsaac and Mr. Twizzler back there. And Emmy and Toby, thank you so much. All yours, Mrs. Hughes, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Can I please have a motion to affirm HIBs 26, 27, 28, and 29?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Should we do the calendar revision motion after the first?
Yeah, let's do that after. Is it listed before?
No, it's listed after.
Yeah, we should do it after.
Okay, perfect. So now is the time for our first residence forum. This is for items that are on the agenda only. If you'd like to come to speak about an item on the agenda, please step up to the mic. Seeing none, we will move on to the organizational items. As Dr. Moore mentioned, can I have a motion, please, to approve the revision to the 2021-2022 calendar?
So move.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes, motion carries.
Thank you. We will now move on to our committee reports. Mr. Richard, do you have an update for student life and programs?
I do. We have three items for move, to move tonight, to vote on tonight. First one is the new garden club. And we had a presentation from, where was it? From Mr. Brandt, who provided the committee with information on the proposed garden club. The club plans to take care of a garden at Central. They plan to grow vegetables, herbs, and fruits. And they would learn both about indoor and outdoor gardening and would be able to collaborate with the family and consumer science foods classes to allow use of the vegetables, fruits, and herbs grown in their recipes. Secondly, there's a, another club, the new women's physical wellness club. Mr. Brandt provided the committee with information on the proposed club. This club is intended to guide young women on nutritional and physical well-being. The club plans on offering a variety of physical activities as well as educational presentations to its members in order for each member to find a passion within the physical wellness realm. Members will explore opportunities beyond what is available in the regular health and PE program, and will expose students to career opportunities within the pathway. Then we have tuition and transportation to vote on tonight for a special education student with related services required by their IEPs. I also wanted to share with you some of the other things we talked about, they're, my view at least, interesting. We talked a bit about student lunch scenarios and discussed concerns with regards to student welfare and safety, ensuring every student has a place to sit. So this requires us to look at accommodating students in many different ways, including food kiosks in different parts of the campus, use of the gym bleachers to, for students to eat. We have a, an update on Title II A. Ms. Cangelosie Hay provided an update. The unexpended professional development salary stipends will be spent on professional development and program development to expand, expand work-based learning, which is formerly called student learning experiences. We also talked about the world history requirement. The committee discussed the change in allowing AP European History to satisfy the world history graduation requirement for the New Jersey Department of Education. With the change in the New Jersey student learning standards and the impending curricular changes for Central's Global Studies course, that this is a course that will satisfy the world history requirement, AP European History will no longer count as a world history course. This course does not cover enough of world history and varied global perspectives to account for a true world history experience. I also wanted to point the board to the department highlights and shout-outs. These are linked on our board docs, and I really would like for you to take a look at them. They're worth reading, perusing the information presented there, and following the links that the department supervisors have placed there for us to follow. Also, the IMC stats were reviewed, and again, the IMC staff's doing a wonderful job informing us as to what's going on here. There's lots of information there, links that you can click on, including what goes on in terms of professional development training at the IMC. So with that, I would like to move the new garden club, the new women's physical wellness club, and the tuition and transportation item.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Operations and transportation. Mr. Nickel, that committee did not meet, but you have motions on the agenda?
Yes, we have three, three items that we're looking to take action on tonight. The first one is the yearly audit of our financial records with no audit recommendations and no corrective action plan necessary. We're looking to approve a contract with Nickerson Corporation for some Steel Lab casework for the upcoming 9-10 science lab renovation project for this summer. And we also have our revised budget calendar as shown on the agenda. With that, I'd like to move items H1 through H3.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Yes, Mr. Turney, Dr. Turney.
Yes, I just want to point out that in the auditor's report, what is, what is highlighted is it's really a four, it's four, $4 million surplus for the district. I think it's outstanding. And the auditors say that we're in excellent financial shape. It's really the good work of Heather and her department in really maintaining this, this integrity to financial responsibility that puts us in that position. So many districts are not anywhere near that. So I think we're in very good shape financially. I did want to ask a question of Dr. Moore. It, in the report, it talks about three standards. I believe it was 2020 when these, or I'm sorry, goals, that these, these goals were adopted, I believe, before my term. I'm not quite sure. They seem very generalized. Are those, as an example, I would see, you know, one of them is to maintain compliance with all mandated programs of the DOE. Is that, I just want to make sure that those were the, the goals and the missions of the, of the board, because my sense is that they're overly generalized and that certainly our last year's goals are much more specific. I just wanted a confirmation of that.
So there, there's a difference between the goals that we set as a board for improvement of the organization and then the budgetary goals. I think what you're talking about is the budgetary goals. Have we voted on those for this coming budget yet?
The budget, we did.
We did last, yes. So at the last meeting, we, but we voted on this year's budgetary goals. But those are goals for the budget process and for the budget, not, not for, you know, operational and continuous improvement of our programs and things like that. So we have to tie our budget to, you know, the specific, specific kinds of goals. So here...
Well, that, that was my concern. They aren't specific.
Well, so the, the district goals, as they're laid out in the, in the financial report, are not the same as the goals that you all approve for, for work, you know, like we did in the beginning of the school year. These are our budgetary goals. Yeah. And those were approved for this coming budget at, at just the last meeting, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you, Dr. Charney. I'd like to echo what he said about Ms. Spitzer as well, and the good work she does here. We're very appreciative. Did we have a motion in a second on that? I know.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to add my compliments to Dr. Charney and Mrs. Hughes. I've had some experience in this area, and it is not common for the budget and the financial auditors to come up with an audit that has no recommendations. That means that as far as they're concerned, we are nigh to perfect. And there are not so many districts that come up that way. And it's not an accident. It's, it's hard work and a well-run department, and my compliments to you and the department, Heather.
You're making her uncomfortable.
It was Jimlin. I got to tag along. Okay, did we take a roll call vote on that?
I'm ready.
We did, okay.
I didn't yet.
We didn't.
You ready?
Yes, please.
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Personnel committee, Mrs. Bloodfield, you're going to give an update?
Yes, we have several items on the agenda that we are moving tonight. First one is the appointment of the per diems. We have several substitute teachers, including one who you'll see later on the agenda. Item number 11. Page 10. Oh yeah, okay. Michaela Smith, we're appointing as the Information Systems Technical Assistant. That's not for vote tonight, but that will be effective for May 16th. So she will be a substitute teacher. We also have a substitute counselor who will be overlapping with a counselor who is coming back. We have the appointment of our hourlies, which includes one cafeteria aide. We have the appointment of two more people for the lesson plan committee to help with the equity inclusion work. That includes Jessica Amili, I'm not, is that how you pronounce it? Okay. From our media center, who will be working with our English teachers, and Kelly Huggins, who, health and PE teacher, will work with our other health and PE teachers. We have two custodians who are taking a leave of absence. We are approving a student teacher for Spanish. We are creating a couple of positions. We have a custodial supervisor and two cafeteria aides, and that will help with our increased sanitation efforts. Couple of revisions in dates, and we are approving the two Schedule C advisors for those two new clubs, both unpaid positions. The couple of other items that are on here that we will be approving, I guess, at the next meeting. We have four bus drivers who are retiring. We are approving three people for proctors, monitors, and test coordinators. And then we have six professional development conferences. And then just a couple other things to point out. Next month is when we do all of our reappointments, and there will be some support staff restructuring that will be done that might result in a few more people joining the association. So with that, I will like to make a motion for personnel items one through nine.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any discussion?
I got another question.
Go ahead, Dr. Turney.
So I'm interested in the lesson plan committee. Is that just integrating inclusion, equity inclusion, or is it some other structural consideration on the lesson plan?
So the lesson plan committee was chartered earlier this year to start working on lessons in response to concerns about bias on campus, to sort of bring some of that education to kids. But we found some targets of opportunity as we move forward this year. And these two specific individuals are being brought on to work on two specific projects that the larger committee has kind of spun off. One of them is working in our English department, in our, I believe in our social studies department as well, but also
in our, I believe in our social studies department as well, but also here in the media center to make sure that we are, we have a good process for ensuring that we have diverse voices represented in all of our reading selections. And the other committee there that Kelly Huggins is working on is, is looking at health and PE and taking a look at sex ed, life skills curriculum, and just making sure that it's got relevance for, for students from all different backgrounds in, in our community. So those two, those are two specific projects that those two individuals are being brought on to the Lesson Plan Committee to work on. But that committee will be doing several different projects along the way this year.
Any other discussion about the personnel agenda?
You had a question earlier. Are you good with your question from, thank you. Okay.
Okay, can I have a roll call vote?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Mrs. O'Donnell's not here. Does anybody have an update on Racism Equity Diversity Committee?
Yeah, I can share just an update on progress for the equity policy, which is one of the specific board goals for this year. The board's set, set to pass an equity policy this year, and this committee's been working feverishly at that. So we are, we have completed now interviews with about half a dozen districts across the country that have similar such policies. We've learned quite a bit. I know Mr. Richard and Ms. Hughes have taken part in some of those interviews, and Mrs. O'Donnell with some students and some staff members. It's been fascinating to learn from districts who have done some of that work. A lot of good lessons learned there for us. Now, that project turns to its next steps, which is where we'll actually start to take the learnings from all those interviews and start to draft out some frameworks for policy development. So we'll be eager to start sharing some draft policy language as we come to the end of this next phase. But they've been moving forward, very nicely led by Lindsay Warren, who is a staff member in our social studies department, who's done a great job coordinating all of that, all of that work with Scott Sacks and Scott Cohen and several students. So we're in, we're in very good shape moving forward on that.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Okay, do we have any additional board business? Okay, we're going to move into the second residence forum. This is for general public comment. If you'd like to speak, please come up to the podium, state your name and municipality, sign in. You have a maximum of five minutes per speaker for a total of 30 minutes. Yeah, just to give notice to the speaker, at four minutes, you'll get a notice. You'll hear the ring that you have a minute left. I'll just remind you, you have a minute remaining.
Okay. All right. Hi, everyone. My name is Lisa Santangelo, and I'm from Reddington Township. At the February 28th board meeting, I brought to your attention the transgender student policy, policy number 5756. Just to recap, this policy states that a minor can change their gender identity and does not have to meet any type of threshold to do so, including parent consent. As I stated last time, wherever you may fall on this issue, I am concerned about the parental consent not being required. I also mentioned that the New Jersey statute, which I have copies of, does not include the following. Number one, parent consent is not required. Two, in the event a parent objects, the superintendent should contact the board attorney regarding minors' rights. Number three, the principal can have a confidential discussion with the minor to ascertain their preference in this matter. Again, those three points are not the law. This is a recommendation from the New Jersey Department of Education, but each school district has a choice. Central has chosen to accept these guidelines. It is particularly disheartening because we voted for you, and now you are in support of a policy that excludes the parents. Again, this also violates your policy 2110, which states the board must work cooperatively with the home and community. How does policy 5756 support this? Last meeting, many adults spoke up about inclusion, including this principle. How does this policy support the concept of inclusion? We, as parents, want to and have the right to be included in our kids' lives. So now the school is saying they get to pick and choose when inclusion is important and when it's okay to exclude the parents. The other part of this is that the policy does not address informed consent. You are giving these minors one side to the story related to gender identity. This is a very complicated issue, and not addressing the pros and cons is simply irresponsible. Again, regardless of where you fall on this issue, it is always prudent to address all areas of concern. Since many of the parents are not aware of the details in this policy, I have spoken to many parents who do not know this. It is important to inform them that their parental rights are impacted by policy 5756. Since transparency is the key to effective policymaking and cooperation between the board and the parents, I am requesting that the board dedicates time at an upcoming meeting for an open forum on this policy. This will allow the parents and the, excuse me, and the board to discuss the policy specifics. If you decide not to take this course of action, then I would like to, one, know the justification for not taking the action, and, two, for the board to have the confidence in that decision by emailing every parent to make them aware that this policy exists and why the board supports a policy that doesn't need their parental consent with regard to a minor's gender identity change. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I have to put my address down?
Yes, please.
Okay. I have a couple of points I'd like to make.
Could you please state your name and municipality?
Oh, sorry, yeah, sorry, I forgot.
No one?
Carol Prignoli, and I live in Flemington, New Jersey.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So as a parent who's watched her daughter, you know, for the last 12 years go to school here, I have a couple of things that I've observed, and I'd like to share with you. First, I know the masks are not mandatory. Thank you. But on the Department of New Jersey Education, in January, it said they were recommended. So they were enforced, even though maybe the children didn't like to wear them. That next time there is a plandemic, there should be families involved, meaning I, as a nurse, would like to know what's going on. Reading an email at 10 o'clock at night after I get home from work is a little challenging. But if you said to me, hey, Carol, there's going to be a meeting where you, like, you're in information, we want all parents to be involved in this, because this was a very worldwide event. So I think next time there is something like this, we should all be on the same page and get families' opinions because they're our children. Second, my daughter did not learn script. It's kind of embarrassing at 18 years old that she can't read a card from her aunt. I think that's terrible. Plus, the Constitution is in script. They need to learn script. Critical race theory. There's only one race, the human race. So when you all, you know, black, white, purple, green, I, as a nurse, have to treat everybody fairly. So I, you don't need it. Human race. Fourth, the lesbian, bisexual, gay, transgender. Again, I'm going to use my personal experience, being a nurse a very long time in St. Vincent's, Manhattan, which was in the Village. I saw lots of transgenders and people transgendering. So when you sit here at age 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, that's too young. The youngest transgender I ever saw was 25 years old, with family involvement, with thousands of dollars worth of medical bills, and psychiatric evaluation. That is a personal thing. It is a family thing. It does not need to be in the schools. It is such a big life event that it should not be shared in a school. You can mention it, that's fine. But as far as encouraging they, them, transgendering, that's not your concern. It's, it's supposed to be educating these kids for reading, writing, arithmetic. So that's very important to me. Fifth thing, I'd like to know who carries your surly bonds, because I want to share that with other families. So I left my email. So if you can send me their surly bond information, I appreciate it. Number six, your name is Robert, right?
Excuse me, please just make public comment to the general board. Do not point out anybody individual.
No, I was, Robert mentioned, you would know, not a bad thing. You mentioned about world events and knowing world history. That's extremely important. Thank you. I agree with that. I just want to mention something called Agenda 2030. It is by the, this is what it said, basically. And I just want you to understand this. As a parent and as your educator, so this should be a really big concern to you. The goal of 2030 Agenda is to socially engineer children to conform to politically correct agendas, dumb down the curriculum to produce adults incapable of independent thought. That's a handful to listen to. So I want you all to think about that. This is what the Agenda 30 is, and I think, Robert, you would be a great teacher to understand that. So thank you for your time, but I would appreciate you all understanding and do the research. I see you're also awake. You're very good.
Ms. Prignoli, could you just clarify what information you're looking for about the bonds, just so that we're clear?
If there is an issue with the school, you have a right as a person that pays taxes in that town, you need to give us the surly bond, S-U-R-E-L-Y bond information? Am I saying it right?
Surety, surly.
I said surly.
Okay, gotcha.
So I would like information on that because I couldn't get it. I couldn't find it. And that's something that should be available to all parents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else who'd like to speak during public comment? Okay, we're going to close public comment. Do we have any board comments to make before we convene into executive session? No one? Okay. So now we're going to convene into executive session just to discuss HIBs?
HIBs.
HIBs for a half hour or so?
Yeah.
With no action to be taken upon return. So can I have a motion to move into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.